Call the city council meeting to order, roll call please.
Alderman Caddella.
Here.
Alderman Knite.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Lewitin.
Here.
Alderman Police.
Here.
Alderman Shockey. Alderman Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here. Coram being present, would you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of August 21st, 2008? So moved. Is there a second on the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, bills Alderman Wesley.
I'll obtain the motions, pay the bills from 9/4/2008 for $566,656.30.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman Police.
Abstain.
Alderman Knite.
Yes.
Alderman Caddella.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin.
Here.
I'll make another motion, pay the bills.
Alderman Wesley, just went. Are you voting present, or are you voting yes or no on the bills?
Alderman Lewitin.
Voting present.
Okay.
Yes.
That passes?
I'll obtain another motion, pay the bills dated 09/18/2008 for $320,993.09. That will be my motion, Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman Police.
Yes.
Alderman Knite.
Yes.
Alderman Caddella.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin.
Yes.
That passes. Council, without objection, I'm going to change the order a little bit and go to Mayor's report. Item A, Chief, are you handling this one?
I'd like to start off with introducing Charlie Woolley and also Charlene Chap, and they'd like to say a few words with regards to AIM and the DUI enforcement effort that we are undertaking.
I want to thank the Village of Wooddale for having us, and especially I want to thank the officers we're going to be honoring here tonight. In 1982, at 9:00 AM in the morning, I was hit head-on by a drunk driver in Itasca, and I've lived in Itasca for 30 years. And I want the people of Wooddale to know that it could happen anywhere, anytime, to anyone. And police officers are on their front lines. They're the ones that are protecting the citizens and are going to court. A drunk-driving arrest is not a glamorous arrest. Take it from me, I've been on ride-alongs, and people are not at their best when you arrest them on the streets when they've been drinking. After the arrest, there's a long court battle, and you have to face a defense attorney who's very well-educated, and it's their job to impeach a police officer, which means they try to trip them up. I've been going to court for years in all the counties in the area, and it's standard operating procedure to try to make the police officer make a mistake on the stand, and many cases are thrown out for that very reason. We do have a court watch program, we're watching the courts in DuPage County right now. We're going to be reporting back to the Illinois Department of Transportation, and we're hoping to expand our program in other counties because we feel the buck stops at the bench. We've passed very tough laws for drunk drivers. Our police officers are doing a great job, but the judges are giving slaps on the wrist, and that's where we really need to focus our attention. And right now, I want to introduce Charlie Woolley. Charlie's going to tell you her story. She's been a super-duper volunteer for AIM for years, and she's going to make the presentation tonight. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the Village of Wooddale. As you all know, this is my fifth year. I was just asking, how long have I been doing this? This is year number five for me. And Wooddale holds a special place in my heart because without the police officers and the chief of police in Wooddale, there wouldn't have been a conviction on the person who killed my stepson. This is my stepson Eric. Woolley, he was killed on June 16th of 2000, and there is no special time for drunk drivers. He was killed at 10 minutes to 9:00 in the morning. Many of you know he was on his way to work, and his father was at the same intersection coming down Tonny. My husband saw his car, was going to wave to him and say hello, and for some reason he looked away, and then he heard the sound of crashing metal. He was the first one over to the car. The police responded very quickly, they called in their task force team, they dotted their i's and they crossed their t's, they made sure they had everything in order for Joe Burkett and his people at the State's Attorney's Office. It took three and a half years, but the person who hit Eric was convicted, and he is serving a 14-year sentence in prison. He will be there for 85% of that time, he won't get off for good behavior. So it's very important to me to honor the police officers that are here in Wooddale, and to thank them for their support and for helping us out in our time of need, and for being there for all the people who live in this area. A lot of people think that it's terrible when they get stopped for drunk driving, but they should be thankful to those officers that stopped them because they could have avoided a crash and them killing someone and killing one of your loved ones. So at this time, I'd like to say thank you to the following officers. We have 187 arrests in 2007 in the Village of Wooddale. I'd like to thank Mike Campbell, he has over 200 career DUI arrests. Mike? Thank you. I'd like to thank John Poole, he has over 75 career DUI arrests. John, thank you. Melanie Rissman is the newest member, and she has over 25 DUI arrests. Thank you very much. She also has a really cute little baby back there. And the last person is Dan Wilson with over 75 arrests. Thank you. Once again, thank you, and thank you to Chief Minowitz for asking me to come. I do come here from the Galena, Illinois area, so it's a little bit of a drive, but there's no way that I would ever say no, and I will be here again next year, so thank you again for your time.
First off, I'd like to thank AIM, their support, helping keep DUI enforcement at the forefront of the State's Attorney's Office, and their priority list is important. I recently attended the Illinois Chiefs Association summer meeting, and NITSCA, the National Highway Traffic Institute, started a campaign, and they have a study, if you go to their website, with regards to positive traffic enforcement leads to a lower crime rate. And I think here in Wooddale, that's one of the things that, with traffic being one of the most paramount things on our citizens' mind, that we do, and I think that also we get the residual with a lower crime rate with that. On behalf of the Wooddale Police Officers, the men and women, I'll tell you, these people here really, we're indebted to them. These are our four top DUI enforcers for this year. You know, Charlene said it the best way, when these things go to court, it's kind of like a root canal. And these men and women, they put themselves out there, their actions are examined, and they stand that litmus test with regards to what we do with the professionalism and the dedication to duty and the commitment that we have to our citizens with their effort. You know, you'll see Mike and John and Dan on midnight shift, you'll see Melanie on 3 to 11. DUIs just don't occur on one shift, and they're out there with their aggressive techniques to help identify within the law, and also make sure that they present an excellent case for prosecution. And we can't thank them enough for what they're doing to help maintain safety on our roadways, which ultimately leads back to our communities with the lower crime rate. So, once again, thank you very much. On behalf of all the members, we really appreciate your efforts in 2007. We look forward to what you're going to be doing for us in the future and your commitment to our agency. So, thanks again, guys. With that, if you can just go before, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, this certainly has been a rough month in the city of Wooddale. From the tornado that we had, or the microburst, whatever it was that hit Ethel Drive, to the historic flood that we had. Thirteen and a half inches fell in Wooddale. That's more rain than hit Texas with Hurricane Ike. The Wooddale reservoir was filled to 100% capacity, and the Elmhurst quarry was also filled to 100% capacity. The city of Wooddale incurred expenses of $105,000, overtime, food, sandbags, fuel, et cetera, incurred by the Wooddale Police Department and City Services in dealing with this event. Damages to various structures, we've tentatively identified 398 properties that sustained flood damage, and we're attempting to verify this number for reporting to state and federal management agencies. In addition, we may not have identified all the structures, and to this end, we will be utilizing other communication tools, such as the city's website, which is www...have I written it down here? wooddale.com. And on that site, there will be a claim form that you can fill out to assist you in filling your claim, or you can call the Police Department, the non-emergency number for further assistance. You may have noticed on the electronic information board also has this information. We encourage all citizens of the city of Wooddale to call in and advise us as to what damages you have sustained, so that can be added to the claim that has been made. The various communities, Wooddale, Addison, Bensonville, Glendale Heights, Warrenville, Elmhurst, that were the hardest hit, have all submitted their claim, their initial estimates to the county of DuPage. County of DuPage compiled that and forwarded that on to the state of Illinois. During the middle of the event, I declared a state of emergency in Wooddale. Bob Schillerstrom declared a disaster for the county of DuPage, and Governor Blagojevich has issued a declaration of disaster, which hopefully will qualify us for federal funding and reimbursement. Have the disaster declaration dated September 15th, 2008, gubernatorial proclamation. Severe storms with continual heavy rainfall impacted northern Illinois beginning September 13th, 2008. These storms resulted in flash flooding, forcing many residents from their homes, causing damage to homes, businesses, and infrastructures. In the interest of aiding the citizens of Illinois and the local governments responsible for ensuring public health and safety, I hereby proclaim that a disaster exists within the state of Illinois, and specifically declare Cook, DuPage, DeKalb, Grundy, Kane, LaSalle, and Will Counties as disaster areas pursuant to the provisions of the Illinois Emergency Management Agency Act 20 ILCS 335/7. This gubernatorial proclamation of disaster will assist the Illinois Emergency Management Agency in coordinating state resources to support local governments in disaster response and recovery operations. This proclamation will also make possible the request for federal assistance to supplement the state's efforts, if it is deemed necessary, to protect the health, safety, and to assist in the recovery. Signed Rodar Blagojevich, September 15th, 2008. Towards that end, we at the city of Wooddale will do everything we can to assist residents in dealing with the damage, and one of the things that the city manager is going to recommend to the city council, waiver of permit and all inspection fees for anybody that needs to replace their furnace, hot water tank, or other damages that have been sustained as a result of the flood. The city manager has recommended that we waive these permit inspection fees associated with the flood damage. I concur with this recommendation and ask the concurrence of the council as well. Council, this is not on your agenda tonight, so we cannot take final action, but to give the building department direction, may I have a motion to waive any and all building permit fees regarding flood damage sustained by the city of Wooddale? Alderman Caddella.
So moved.
Alderman Knite. Moved to second, anything further on the discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Red Cross information, if any citizens need assistance with housing or meals, they are encouraged to contact the Red Cross at 847-391-5711. If anyone needs emergency funds, the Red Cross phone number is 312-729-6100. Jeff, is this on our website? For those that...
So if you access the city of Wooddale website, you can get those phone numbers if you didn't catch them that quickly. Again, Red Cross is 847-391-5711, and for emergency funding assistance, 312-729-6100. Anybody who needs to take refuse waste material out to the street, normally we require that you not do that until Monday. You are free at this time to take it out anytime and place it in the street and get that out of your house. There will be no penalty for doing that. The quickest solution, or parcel solution to our problem, which we have been fighting for for many years, is a modification of the dam at Bussy Woods. To my knowledge, the DuPage County has already purchased and has in storage the equipment to do that. It's actually a big bladder, but it doubles the reserve in the Bussy Woods reservoir. This is something DuPage County, your local municipalities, and Cook County have been working on for a number of years. Unfortunately, the permit to approve that has been sitting on a bureaucrat's desk at the National Park Service for 18 months, and they have not, as of yet, seen fit to approve this modification to the Bussy Wood Dam, which my understanding would lower flood levels in Wooddale from one to two feet, as well as Addison, Bensonville, and Itasca. Mayor Gruber, myself, Mayor Hartwig, and Bob Schillerstrom have all offered that we will go to Washington if necessary to try to campaign to get that permit issued. Special thanks to the Wooddale Fire District, number one, for the work and the assistance they did in this flood disaster. Special thanks to the Wooddale Park District. You may not know it, but we actually dug up sand from one of the ball fields to help fill sandbags, to help meet the needs of the residents of Wooddale. And our thanks to the Wooddale Park District. Wooddale Police Department did an excellent job over and above the call of duty, and we thank them. Wooddale City Services, once again, the guys put in...how many hours in a row did you work, John? It's all a blur? And a particular thanks to the Wooddale Citizen Emergency Response Corps. These are a group of volunteers of your fellow citizens who come out in needs and in emergencies, volunteer their time and effort at no cost to the city of Wooddale. Anyone interested in joining the Wooddale Citizen Corps can contact the Police Department at the non-emergency number. My also special thanks to Holy Ghost Church. I walked in on Sunday to the middle of one of their masses, was that 9:00 or 10:00 AM, Eugene? The 9:00 AM mass, and said, "We have an immediate need to fill sandbags in the city of Wooddale." About 30 people stood up, with Father Kevin's permission, and left the mass and volunteered their services immediately at the Public Works Department. And the Public Works staff wants me to especially thank those individuals, and also the Boy Scouts of the city of Wooddale, who came out for two days of service filling sandbags. That was greatly appreciated. A lot of people would have suffered more if those sandbags had not been filled by volunteers. My understanding is we distributed 4,500 sandbags throughout the community approximately. Also want to thank various Fenton High School students, we do not have their names, and who came out to help fill sandbags at the Public Works Department, and any and all other volunteers who came out and assisted the Public Works and the police in this disaster we just went through. And a particular thank you to all the citizens of Wooddale, who will go unrecognized and unnamed, but those of you that were public servants and helped your neighbors remove their furniture from the basement, or helped them do sandbags and carry it, or provided any other relief that you can. Wooddale really came together during this event as neighbor helped neighbor, and if it wasn't said by anyone else, I thank you for your service to the community. And with that being said, do we have any citizen comment? And if so, if you go to the podium and give us your name and address. I know some of you are still suffering out there and still need further assistance.
Alderman Lewitin?
In regards to the flood situation that we had, there's another situation dealing with flood, and that is flood insurance. I don't know how many of you are aware of it, but the National Flood Insurance Program comes to an end at the end of this month, and when it's terminated, there would be no more flood insurance, either new or renewal. Having said that, both the House and the Senate have approved versions of a new legislation to extend flood insurance to the year 2013. The Senate measure, the important thing about it, it extends coverage to the year 2013, and they're pushing for forgiveness of FEMA's $18 billion debt for Hurricane Katrina from the federal government. The House, also, they are going to remove coverage for a second dwelling for people. The House version, on the other hand, also extends coverage to the year 2013, but they want to increase the maximum coverage limits and include optional coverage, such as additional living expenses on the flood insurance policy. This year, with our flood, our people in Wooddale had to leave their homes, and at their own expenses, they had to find additional living, whether it was a hotel or something else. But they had to pay for it on their own. If their flood insurance would have had additional living expenses, it would have paid for the hotel until they could return to their home. Therefore, I would like to recommend that everybody call or write immediately, email their U.S. senators from Illinois, House representative, and say that you favor the House version that would add increased, would add additional living expenses, and also that would the House and the Senate please reach a compromise in the next two weeks before the existing flood insurance legislation expires. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Knite?
Yeah. Grocery departments took a meeting, they had to evacuate every resident, which I believe, Chief, the number is correct, between 80 to 100 people were displaced, if not more. These people have not been able to return to their, to the buildings. We have tried to contact, it's a real problem because these are being converted from apartments to condos, so some units are owned, some are rented. We can't really find some of the owners. The renters have been trying to contact these people, they can't get in touch with them. And what basically what it needs, the units that took the damage were the garden apartments. Some of them had, toward the west end of the complex, took up to about two, two and a half feet into their units. On the east side, they took several inches where there was just carpet damage. Carpets got wet and maybe some of the wall. Now, the other units, the second floor, the third floor units, cannot occupy their places, which are still, I mean, they were not touched by water or anything, until the basement units are cleaned out. We don't even know who to go to to get these units cleaned out. The citizens, the residents have been trying to contact the manager of the building, and he's given them a lot of grief and a lot of different stories. They do have an association. Now, can we go to the association, have them take care of these units, clean them up, or do whatever? And then, they're saying that, the management is saying that they're not going to do anything for anywhere from four to six months until they receive their insurance checks from FEMA. Now, I don't even know if they're entitled to insurance checks or whatever. That's totally unacceptable. Like I said, we've got people displaced, we have families that have children in the school system here, we have some elderly people who work here, who had to go to the east side of Chicago to live with their families and drive out here every day to work in Wooddale. It's just a total hardship on the residents on a matter that can be quite simply taken care of. We don't know who to go to. Is the city, is there any way that we could put any pressure on the association, on whoever to get this thing moving, where we could at least get two-thirds of these people back to their units?
Mr. Noack, I think you've had conversations with the management company. Would you give us an update where we stand with One Wooddale Place?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The city staff in the building department has been working with the management people at the Wooddale, rather, the grocery department slash condo development. And right now, where it stands is that these particular basement units that Alderman Knite had referred to are the ones that need to have attention and cleanup as soon as possible because the standing water within these units is only going to create a more hazardous environment. As of, right now, as we speak, I do know that there is one building that is vacant and that has not, not been damaged, but the other ones have received, as Alderman Knite had mentioned, various amounts of water damage. And right now, we are trying to urge and pressure the management people to get these units cleaned so that the electricity can be turned back on, as well as the gas, and these units can become livable again. With respect to the response that the management team has given so far, I can't really comment on that. It seems like very little has been done since the event happened, and we would certainly look to have council give us any assistance in order to move this forward, as maybe requiring these people to set some sort of a program or schedule in mind in order to get this completed, so that at least individuals who reside and own properties that are wanting, that want to get back into their units, can have at least an idea when that can happen. Right now, there's not much the building department can do in that regard until those particular units have been rid of the water and sanitized. Sanitizing has taken place.
Is there, I don't know, the association, who's part of that, or whatever, can we give them a, you know, say, a two-week time period or before to get things moving, to get the management to do something? You know, can we, I don't know how we could... You know, can we, I don't know how we could put pressure on them, but I mean, it's not that difficult a thing to do. It's just finding somebody who could coordinate it and do it.
Mr. Bond?
Yeah, I have, the association unfortunately is not going to be of much assistance. While they may have an interest in assisting their fellow residents of returning, their legal authority is somewhat limited. I have had discussions briefly with the mayor, and I know the city clerk has some contact information that we could utilize. There are a couple of different recourses that we, as a city, could utilize in order to put some pressure on the property owners in order to get those other residents back in, and we certainly will do that.
Whatever the city could do, we would surely appreciate it. Like I said, because here again, people have out-of-pocket expenses. Some are living in hotels, motels, with relatives and whatever, and it's getting more expensive day by day. And just traveling, I mean, everybody's dispersed. Traveling expenses and everything are adding up, and it's not going to be reimbursable by insurance, but...one of our residents, Lynette, would you like to...
Hi. Yeah. I live in, actually, I'm a garden...
If you could move a little closer to the microphone, we do...
I'm an occupant of a garden apartment, the one that received some of the water from the flooding.
And you could also, for the city clerk, could you give your name and address, please?
Of course. Lynette Winfrey, 338 Grove Street, Apartment 105, gardening unit.
Could you explain if she's a tenant or an owner?
I'm a tenant. I'm a tenant of 338 Grove Street. My primary concern is time. I'm looking for an itinerary from the property management. There's been a lot of running around as far as conversation between the owners, as well as the property managers, on a timeframe when the guarding units can get back in. And my son is in school. My sister's also there, and she has two children. They have no place to go after school because we can't go into their house. And the primary reason for us not being able to go into our house is because there is So, I'm asking that you not only put pressure on them, but you come back with information, having a timeline on when the, not only the other two levels, but when the guarding units will, when the people of the garden level will be able to reoccupy their units. There's no after-school program. I work in Oak Park. My sister works in Shiller...